Okay, so we're recording, we are recording now. So June 12th is what the governor has stated as this is when we're coming back to school. That's great, however, without a game plan that makes sense, it doesn't work out very well. That's, that's point one. Point two is that we have to create a game plan for next year. That is able to serve the needs of all of our diverse ranges of parents. I've had a lot of different conversations with parents from all over the spectrum. Who, you know, either they need a lot of help, they need a lot of support. Or they are able to support a lot, right? And they have a lot of time at home and they're able to do that. And the reality is that we can't treat all of our parents as in the same boat. That's not going to work. So in the conversations, we've been having the parents across the district. And our school has really been trying to make that as constant as possible. I know that with me, you've had a lot of conversations. We've been hearing parents asking for three different possibilities. The first one, which you may have heard of the most, and if you were present at the board meeting was very loudly noticeable that parents want. Is that they want kids back to school, right? That, that's one. So that's an idea of coming back to school 100% at the school site. Another option that's been coming through is this idea of I need more flexibility in my schedule. I need the ability that some days I want my student at school, some days I need them at home, given my work and all the things that are going on. So the ability to do what's called a hybrid model where 50% of the school week is at school, 50% is at home. And then we do have parents that for whatever reason, one or another, that they need their child at home all the time. We have a lot of parents that come from situations where family members are immunocompromised, that they, they have medical issues and are very scared. Of seeing their kids back to school. And so we want to be cognizant of that and be able to offer options at home as well and continue providing with a distance learning plan. So with that in mind, the survey will be asking you as parents, what is it that you want for your child? What does that look like? I see here in the chat box. Whoever put it in, I'm sorry, I don't know off the top of my head, the student's name, but I received it only one child. Will I be receiving another one for my other child? If for any reason, surveys wise, and I will say that there's been a lot of confusion regarding surveys because the district has sent, I think, like seven or eight surveys over the last week. To you as parents, which is survey overload. And so that can come across as very confusing. The survey I'm talking about has not been sent out yet. And this is a survey that's specific for the summertime and next year. Okay. And so you will be receiving that and it'll be pushed out by the district because it has to be tied back to Zangle. And tied back to your student account is going to be treated very seriously in that manner. If for any reason you are not receiving emails or anything like that, please let me know. Yenny, please email me. And I will go to the district and figure out what's going on with your account. Okay, can you send me an email and then I can make sure that you are part of that? So you should be receiving a lot of an insane amount of surveys over the last few weeks. So if you haven't received anything, I'll put my email again. And then it'll be there at wintercajonvalley.net. Okay. So another thing on the survey that you'll be noticing is specifically around summer school. And so I've been talking to other principals at other districts, Chula Vista, La Mesa, Alpine, San Diego, that. They, they are not planning going back to school after about six weeks after we come back in. In August, so they're actually waiting six weeks after the starting point of school. We're trying to get kids back as of July 6th, which is in just a few weeks. So in a lot of ways, we're way ahead of the curve in terms of what other people are doing. And so the idea there is what they're looking for for summer school. Summer school will be starting July 6th. And once again, I keep saying summer school, but it's a summer. I'm trying to not use that word, summer enrichment, that's what the district's trying to use. Is going to be provided over the summer, starting July 6th. And the idea with summer enrichment is that it will be done in two week increments. Of which you as parents will be able to enroll your students into those. Summer enrichment will be specifically for parents who are essential workers. And it'll be provided for them. It will have a 6:30 to 6:00 PM schedule. And then teachers will be pushing in voluntarily, right? They have their summer to be able to support students in academics and enrichment and other areas that we're working through. And so I'm working with my teacher teams over the next week in terms of what that can look like and how to support. I am receiving a few chats coming in here that are saying that you received the survey today. Fantastic. Okay, so that looks like the survey went out today, which is great news for me and great news for all of us. So if you have not received a survey specific around summer school, something or another, please let me know. If you know anybody who has not received a survey, send them my way. I think 99% of the school has my phone number by this point, but if you have, please send me an email. Send me a note, let me know what you need and we want to make sure what that looks like. Okay. Perfect. All right, so for summer school, then it would be over two week increments. And then the idea is that we are trying to treat summer enrichment to model as close as we can to school itself as we, as we possibly can. And the reason for that is we want to have a game plan in place for when we start school that we can practice over the summer. There's a lot of guidelines in place by the CDC at a state level and then also at a local level. You realize that our counties, we all are mandated to follow our, our local CDC. Specifically around supporting our students with safety, right? And there's a lot of safety parameters around what that may look like. So the idea is over summer, being able to practice that, being able to support our students in a way that is able to ensure that when school starts. We've got a strong game plan, we're good to go and we're enabling our students to be as successful as possible. Somebody's asking, I believe, and if you're sending me notes privately, I'm sorry, it's going to come across to everybody. So one of the questions is July 6th, the enrichment start date for all CVES. All schools in Cajon Valley are going to be doing this summer enrichment program. And, and the reason for that is all schools in Cajon Valley need to have a strong game plan in place in order to start school. So this is another thing that the district is doing is unlike any other district I know of is, is practicing, getting things ready. Because you can imagine that it's going to be very, very difficult to have kids starting just without any practice, without anything going. And that's where we're trying to get going on this. So the idea is we're going to be doing sort of what's called a soft start, starting July 6th. And it's really going to be dependent on these surveys going out, figuring out, you know, numbers of parents, numbers of students. And then from there, for me, number of staff and what that looks like. Okay. Now, in terms of questions around next year and around the fall and around the models. There's a lot of communication going around and a lot of disinformation going around as well. So what I'd like to do, and this is gonna, we're going to try our best in this and try our best to be as cognizant in this as we can. Is I'm going to open the floor up for people who have questions and who want to go through any, any specifics that you want. Because my feeling is in answering questions, we're going to start answering questions for a lot of people in that. If for any reason I say to you, I don't know the answer yet, I apologize. It's, it's not because I don't want the answer. You can imagine as principals, we wish we knew the answers like five months, months ago. Because this is all major, major, major planning, right? So we're trying to work through this. Okay, so I'm going to start answering questions as we go through. Y tengo que decir perdón a todos que solo hablan español, sé que estoy hablando un montón inglés. Por favor, si no está hablando en español o no pueden tener su pregunta una respuesta para su pregunta. Por favor, si me pueden mandar un correo electrónico para que puedo responder a su pregunta. Quiero que todos se pueden participar en esta conversación y estar parte de lo que estamos haciendo. Y con eso, por favor, si tiene una pregunta o tiene algo decir o lo que sea, un pensamiento, idea, por favor, me dicen, okay? The first question is, will summer be multiple grade levels? Would they stay with the same cohort? So there's a couple of things that are going through that are some new, new kind of wordings. That at first seemed very scary, but when we start looking into what they actually mean and what it looks like. It's language that I've been talking to, to the parent community here of Bostonia the entire year, right? So those of you who've been with me in the action team meetings and the planning meetings around middle school. 99% of what we're talking about as advisory cohorts, multi-grade level, looping, all these sort of these concepts. We've already been working through like crazy. So in a lot of ways, Bostonia is hot years ahead of the district in terms of this because we've been working through plans and we have really strong plans already in what this looks like. So Stephanie, I'm sorry, I'm going around in a lot of ways. First question, will summer be multiple grade levels? Would they stay with the same cohort? Okay, so what we're looking at is there is going to be what it seems like two different things at play. The first one is CDC guidelines, right? So we want to make sure that whatever we're doing is in compliance with what the CDC is asking. And I know that for parents, you're seeing other school districts in California. I know Temecula is one that comes up top of my head that have a little bit more of a flexibility with that than other districts. And a lot of that comes down to the local CDC. Our CDC in San Diego is pretty strict, so we have to follow and be in compliance with what is being asked. So with regards to that, we do want students to be in the same cohorts and we design it around the days and around what the parent schedules look like and that sort of thing. So that's where the idea of the summer enrichment program, we're going to be practicing around how to do that appropriately. We don't want students to be moving between classes, right? Too much because that also creates an issue of safety. And so in terms of multi-grade levels, that is something that likely we will be practicing this summer and seeing how that works. I have my opinions around multi-grade levels, around which grade levels work best together. I can probably assume as parents, and we can all agree that a kindergarten and an eighth grader in the same classroom probably doesn't make a lot of sense, right? So in education, you can start being logical about things, about what's best for kids. And answers start to come through that, that aren't as scary, right? Probably TK Kinder would probably want to be within their own area, own cohort, right? Because that's its own world. You can imagine TK is, is they're very babies still, right? Versus having a TKer and a fifth grader in the same room is going to be difficult in terms of that, right? So we have to make cohorts appropriate for grade level spans as well as maturity levels. So ask me more questions if you're, if you're still wondering around that. The next question is around, will the kids have to wear a mask? How closely will school look to what the kids are used to? Will there be recess? So Ms. Jones, as far as right now, one thing that also is happening, and I will be very, very transparent and honest in my, my thoughts on this. The CDC has been changing their guidelines, what seems like almost weekly as well, right? So it's been doing this sort of thing. So a couple of months ago, it did seem that masks were mandatory. It seems now that masks are mandatory for staff, but not so much for students, especially if they're maintaining within cohorts. So that may change next week, we don't know, right? But as of now, what we're doing is we're trying to stay in compliance with the most recent CDC guidelines with regards to what's going on and how to support kids the best. The next question was, how closely will school look like to what they were used to in the past? Oh, it's, it's going to be interesting. It's going to be a shift for sure for now. Obviously, we, we want school to be amazing, we want school to be awesome, we want school to be safe and fun and exciting and about kids, right? So my goal as an administrator is Bostonia has to be the best school in the entire world. And I have to make sure that that's what I create, right? And that's always what's in the forefront of my head. So when thinking about that, I want school to be fun, I want school to be exciting, I want school to be everything that children need. I also need a school to be safe and, and that's part of what we have to look into is how to do that and what that may be. So so far, right now, the CDC is pretty, you know, strict in terms of what those guidelines look in terms of classrooms. And in the, the survey today, I believe, tell me if I'm wrong, but the district did provide you, I think it's like an 18-page-ish document. Or they may have provided in the last few days with regards to kind of the overall idea. And in there, it goes through what is, or what are the guidelines that the CDC has in place for students as of right now. And remember, and I think they did put that in their, the actual survey, that that can change in a moment. So that, that does happen. I'm going to go back up to more questions. Kendra, I'm still asking, I'm still spotting. Will there be recess? Yes, there, there has to be recess in place of some sort. I know for myself personally, I can sit in a chair for about 15 minutes before going crazy. So that is me, I'm sure many of our students are the same way, right? So I'm one of those people that does this all day long, right? And so it drives people crazy, my wife especially, and I need recess, right? So our kids need time to just relax and to be outside and get their wiggles out. That time though, has to be done appropriately and has to be done following CDC guidelines as well, right? So recess probably will look slightly different than what it did before in the sense that we're having a free for all in that situation. It will probably be a little bit more monitored and a little bit more supported in terms of what it will feel like. Okay, what are the safety precautions are they're going to implement if and when the kids return to classrooms? Okay, so let's, the, the idea there, I'm going to go through that program into two parts. The first one is it's not an if, it's when, right? So we're looking at when students go to classrooms. And that's starting July 6th already with the summer enrichment program and then going sooner into, into fall. So in terms of safety precautions, I can tell you a little bit about right now, but I just want to be careful with saying that this is what it's going to be. Because it really has been changing pretty, pretty often. So right now, what it looks like is, of course, we would have to have parents as they drop the kids off, right? We would need to do temperature checks for the students, staff would have to do temperature checks. We would have to have cohorts in which students would not be. How to say it, but they wouldn't have too many exposures to other people and other students that they would remain within that same cohort. We wouldn't want students to be sharing the materials and doing a lot of things. The idea is to limit the amount of things touched, to limit the amount of exposures the students have to a lot of different environments. But to provide students with as close to a school scenario as we can until we're given more flexibility in what we do. Right now, the limitation that is, is most obvious that you're going to notice is the amount of students in a classroom. And currently, that's 10 to 12. My hope is over the summer, it will become more flexible and increase maybe 12 to 15, but we don't know, right? And this is also a big part of all of this is when we look into next year, you know, we have to be cognizant of the reality that there may be a chance of a spike in all of this again in terms of number of cases in San Diego. Which we don't know what the governor will do, right? If you will have a state of emergency again and shut down schools. So this is, you know, in the back of our heads is planning for, you know, game, Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, E, all the way down, right? In terms of what will happen. And so this is a big part of the reason why we're starting school so quickly is because we want to get going in terms of planning things out and making sure that we have very, very strong plans. So that in the case that let's say something were to go back to an emergency procedure in which we have to shut down schools again. Then we aren't struggling, we have a plan, it just runs right into that and we're good to go, right? And that's really what none of us as principals want to do is a repeat of what happened in March where it was, oh my God. Schools closed and so now what, right? So we don't need that, we don't want that, we've gone through that once, nobody wants to face that again. And so this is part of the idea is we have to have multiple options in place in order to make sure that what we're doing makes sense. As many, you know, for as many people as we can, as, as many parents as we can. But also as capable of jumping quickly into a full distance platform if the state forces that again. Which I and everybody, I'm sure on this conversation hopes that does not happen, right? So, okay, let me just go through more questions. And please, please, please keep asking questions and I will do my best to go through it. Okay, and our let, Ms. Thotis, if you're giving me a favor, if I didn't answer, and if anybody, if I didn't answer your question fully, then just write it again and just clarify it. So I can make sure I'm answering questions. Amy's asking for fall, will there be lunch at cafeteria? Yes, we, we have to provide lunch by state law, right? But the idea is what does lunchtime look like in a way that makes sure that we follow, you know, those, those safety guidelines? So lunchtime probably would have those, you know, social distancing parameters in place, right? In terms of distance. And my hope is that those parameters will loosen a bit as we get going here. But if they don't, then there will be something that is, is following, that's right, following the parameter set in by the state. So yes, there would be lunch, we would want it to be fun, we would want it to be, you know, a situation where students feel really excited and they're able to see each other and talk. They just may not be seated right next to each other, right? So we'd probably want to follow through that and then create a lunch schedule that makes sense for numbers. Stephanie asking, what parents' kids have a choice as to who their teacher is for the summer? I don't know yet the answer to that question because I don't know how many kids yet and I don't know how many teachers yet. And that's really, there's two surveys that are going out this week, right? The one that I think came out to parents already. And that's about, you know, what your intentions are, what your needs are. On that survey as well, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but on that survey, it should show you what are essential workers and categorize that pretty, you know, straightforward for all, for everyone. And then you can see what, what are those, those listings. I'm not sure yet if they would open it up for parents who are not. It really depends on numbers. So that, that will be something that I know in the next few days, we'll probably have some more clarification on. And then to answer Stephanie's question, then to finish that, right? I can't tell you very much in terms of choice and all of that until I know what is it look like for numbers and who do I have and all that. Remember, our teachers have break this summer by their contract, right? They definitely deserve a break. We do have a very passionate staff, so I know several of my teachers will be jumping into support with summer school, but that is not mandatory on that, right? It's helpful for me because we get to practice and work things out and make sure that we have a strong game plan, but it's, it's not mandatory. All right, moving forward, will there be a survey for each student? Ms. Beany, I, I believe so, it may be tied to each family. If, if I'm wrong in that. Thank you so much, Steve. And so with that, then if, if the surveys aren't coming for each student, do let me know. If you need support in that, I'm absolutely here to support you in that. Okay, Tina asking, can you please recap the outcome of yesterday's district meeting, specifically what was added or changed to the draft of the opening plan? Okay, let me give you like a, Tina, I'll do my best to give a broad scope. So the outcome of the district meeting yesterday was a approval of the reopening plan. And that was approved by the board in order for, for us to move forward. And to be honest, you know, as a principal, that was music to my ears because that allows me to start moving forward with planning and I have a lot of planning to do, right? And so there is, there's really an amazing amount of work to be done in a very short amount of time. And, and my priority is to make school epic for your students because Bostonia has to be a very high caliber, strong, strong school. There's no options around that, right? And so that's a big part of this is this is allowing me to start making sure that the plan is strong. And then specifically what was added or changed to the draft. My understanding is the addition to the draft was wording by Jim Miller, who is one of our board trustees. Who is also, I believe, a defense lawyer. So he's very much a wordsmith and able to, to ensure that. But the point that was brought in there was the ability to restructure the plan depending on the movement of the state and the shifts in the state. So what the district will be doing is the board, I believe, as part of the conversation will be meeting at some point each month. To review the plan, to ensure the plan is effective, to make shifts in the plan as needed by the state, right? And so that's something in there. And Tina, let me know if that answered your question. I hope it did, but just ask again if it didn't. Karina and Ms. Tony asking, the district document that was emailed beginning before the meeting was very thorough with details of safety precautions. Yes, it was very detailed and I will put the caveat in there that even what was written in that document can change, right? And that, that's the point is the CDC has changed multiple times over the summer or over the last few months, I mean. I can tell you, I've had staff meetings where I started the meeting saying one thing and ended the meeting saying, just kidding, we changed. So it's very much a quick turnaround with different things and nobody's really done this before, right? So that's a big part of this, we're all learning how to do this together. So there's a lot of learning and a lot of shifts. Amy saying, are the three options online, hybrid or traditional, how Bostonia is rolling for the fall, is that official? As to my understanding, yes, that, that is official, right? We want to make sure that we have options for students. I know compared to other districts, that's, that's wonderful, right? My sister is like an AP position in Boston, in Massachusetts, and they only have one option. And that is to return to school in the hybrid model, right? So we as a district, the thought process is we're giving parents options and that's great because we want to be able to support. The reality that not all of our parents are at home, not all of our parents have the capability of supporting students and some of our families have very, very difficult home lives. I know at our school site, we have multiple students that we've never had any contact with, period. Even with a lot of reaching out and a lot of trying to do home visits, all sorts of things throughout this entire, right? So the reality is it's a massive, massive discrepancy between families, even within our own school, right? So we have to be cognizant of that and realize that we have to be able to support. Kendra asking, if we choose one option, attend school, but it isn't working for our child, can we choose to move to a different option like online learning? My understanding is yes, I think there will be some flexibility in that. The main thing though, that we have to work through is numbers. So I'm sure Kendra, that there be more information on that. I'm sure you're not the only parent across the district who asked that question. And we want to make sure it's supportive of our families and our needs. Main thing that I need to know is how many of each, right? Who are the buckets? And from there, I can start figuring out and planning. Delia, if you wouldn't mind, just clarifying for the 100%, are you talking about at school or are you talking at home? Let me know that. Okay, and just write it in again, if you wouldn't mind. And then Luisa saying, I received a survey for each student. Fantastic, perfect. So if you only received a survey for one, then let me know and then I'll make sure that the district's supporting you and your other student. My understanding is it's tied back to your Zangle account, right? Because it goes directly into our enrollment and we're treating it as, as understanding numbers, right? So that's really what we need to know. Ebony is asking, hybrid is a combo of both distant and in-class experiences? Yes, and that would allow for parents to have students at home in a distance learning model, but also at school site in the at-school model to allow for flexibility. This is primarily with families that either have, you know, difficult work sessions, that, you know, that need support, that, you know, can't get their child to school every single day. That, that's reality for many of our families. I know many families at our school that have lost their jobs, right? There's students at our school that are homeless, right? So it's realizing the, the circumstances for, for many of our children right now is very, very difficult. So we want to make sure that we support. For online learning, will it be classroom setting like we are currently doing? How many kids in online classes? So, so to answer that question, I think there's two questions there. Let me think. So in terms of how many kids in an online class, I don't know yet. And I think that depends on number of students that actually want to do that, that, that I think is question one. And then from there is how many students make sense, right? And, and being effective for me, right? That this is all comes back to what is best for our children and what makes most sense for our children. It seems like the district is going to be providing me with, with a bit of flexibility in how I approach this. So I can basically modify it to make it best for Bostonia, right? And so this is the idea is we have to make sure that this is the best plan for our children here. So the other part of the plan is, will it be a classroom setting, sort of like what we're doing now? What we want to do, and this is part of the conversation that I've been having with, with different people, is we want to make it sort of an equitable, equal experience between the different models, right? We don't want that a student who is a distance learning has any lower of an expectation or a situation or experience than somebody's all at school, right? So that's part of the thought process is, I think we can all agree that, you know, the, the playlists that the teachers created were incredible. Given the zero amount of time that they had to do that, right? So there was like overnight created and they provided that for our kids, which was an immense amount of work and they've done an amazing job. I think we can all agree that there's probably some modifications and some shifts. We want to continue to do those playlists to make them stronger and stronger, right? And that's part of the idea is we want to make sure that it's really, you know, as, as robust and as rigorous. And for my school, it's as language targeted, right? As we can possibly be, right? This is a dual language school with a 90-10 per model, which is the most rigorous of models and therefore needs the most support. And so that's something that we have to work through is, is to ensure that that is strong. Okay, Delia asking, are teachers going to, in school, are teachers going to be teaching students or is everything online? I, I don't think we can make everything online, right? I think we have to make, teaching needs to be done, right? And I think when we go back to the idea of what is best for kids, the answers start to become a little bit more simple, right? It is, it's truly needs to be around the needs of our students. So in terms of at school or at home, there needs to be one-on-one time spent with the teacher, there needs to be time understanding student needs, there needs to be the ability to teach, right? So in, in the idea of what is going on at school, I know that there's been some, a lot of conversations going on among parents that a student at school site will be sitting in a computer or in front of a computer all day long. I think we can all agree that that is pointless. So why, we have to make it appropriate, we have to do it about what students' needs are, right? So that's going to be something that we have to work through is what's done at school, what's done at home, what's done in the hybrid model makes sense for our kids. And that's something that I know that our teachers really want and that we have to make sure that we create a situation that is appropriate. Kariina asking, if one chooses distance learning 100%, will it be the same as it has been or will it be more intense, more video teaching? What would you like? Because this is a spectrum of answers that I'm going to receive on this one. I've had parents that have reached out to me that have said that the distance learning model was too hard, that it was too much, that it was intense work. And then I've had others that have reached out to me saying that it was too little, that it was not effective, that it was not strong enough. So I'm going to say it has to be tailored to the child. How's that as an answer? And it has to be appropriate for the students' needs are. So for this school, we have a very rigorous program. So likely the playlist will become more rigorous and become more Spanish intensive and be more about what the students need at our school. Bostonia is a different school than other schools in this district because we're a dual language school. Our needs are different and we have to be appropriate for what those needs are. And so my teachers know this, our school, our teachers, we work very, very hard to ensure that our school students are able to be successful. And so that, that would be my, my best way of approaching that answer right now. Moving into some more questions, Stephanie asking, how will the state determine ADA for attendance if people are all over the place? Great question. My thought process in this, I can give you an opinion, is likely it'll be based on enrollment with a class. And based on attendance in that class, not necessarily attendance at school. So I don't know the answer to that question, Stephanie, that's a really good question. And I don't think the state knows that answer yet either. So I think that's going to be something that likely that'll be more thought and more answers coming over the next few weeks on that. Because I guarantee you teachers, parents, principals, all over the state are asking that exact same question I have been too. Sarah is asking, if we choose distance learning, will all assignments be through the laptop or on paper as well? This is a really good question, you know? I think easiest is over the laptop, over the digital component, right? Because then we're able to send out a lot more information in a lot shorter time, work through that. But part of that is, you know, our, our parents, right? We have a spectrum in terms of what you feel, right? The word that we use in education is this idea of being a digital native. Your children are digital natives. They grew up with technology. Many of us who are our parents are not, right? We did not grow up with technology and it's not second nature to us, right? So therefore it does make a lot more sense to have a little bit more traditional support in terms of that, right? So I think this is something that would also need to be personalized for families, right? If you need a little extra paper and pencil activities, working through that, we can always do it, right? But it's just a matter of figuring out what is best for the families and also figuring out what's best for teachers in terms of making the education strong. I know in terms of resources, there are a lot more resources online that are readily available than you can find on a paper pencil world, right? That's, that's a little bit more difficult nowadays. But it really is dependent on the family and working through that. Ebony is asking, do the kids keep their current Chromebooks moving forward? Yes, for now. You can imagine as a district, what the difficulty is with regards to returning Chromebooks over the summer. You probably have heard, you know, that we're not doing that. Every single student that would have a Chromebook, I'll just the process, right? So if you can think through the process, student would return a Chromebook to the school. Some very sad person would have to go pick that Chromebook up, would have to disinfect the Chromebook, would have to disinfect themselves. Would have to take it to the district office. That person would have to disinfect it. It would just be this crazy process, right? So rather than doing that, we're going to keep the Chromebooks with students and then moving into next year. As CDC guidelines shift and work through that, then we'll do shifts and updates and working through it. We have a very, very strong IT department that are on it. They're on it, they're very, very good. And so with that, then the idea is we want to make it as easy for families as we can. We'll continue Chromebook hospital, all of that will continue working through. We have somebody on site who is sort of our IT guru guy. He'll be helping us through that and supporting us with it. Okay, continuing. Larissa is asking, can you give us an example of what a typical day would look like for each option? How can a student do online school if she is in a classroom? Teacher is a classroom of students? You know, I, I'm going to hold off on that part because I don't know yet exactly what a typical day would look like because we're still designing it out. I saw what the district provided as sort of guidelines in terms of what that may be. And a lot of it is very, very strong and definitely cutting edge as, as David Mearsure always is. But I have to modify it to be best for a dual language program here at the school site, right? So likely it may be a little different in the sense of how I approach it here. But that being said, what I can give you some examples of best practices in terms of education that will be able to be done next year here. And one of those is this idea of moving away from direct instruction for an entire class, right? And moving towards focusing on small group instruction. This is probably something that you've heard quite a bit, right? Throughout education here at Bostonia. But if you think about it, if you look at students here at our school, we want to support them where they're at, right? So that's an idea is we can't think of every student as part of this promedio, which is in English an average. We, not all students fit the average, right? We have students that are all sorts of different ranges of needs and supports. And so the idea of small group instruction is that you're able to, able to accommodate students in those different situations. So for example, let's say that we have students who are zooming in to a classroom because they are part of that classroom's cohort. And then we have students at site, that's okay, right? Because in the small group instruction, you can meet with students, either in person or over online. And you're still working through a small group scenario. That's not all any different from what was going on currently in the normal school year. If you think about it in a small group scenario, right? A teacher is doing a mini lesson in a small group. And then there's other small groups working on other activities in the classroom. And that teacher is supporting students at their ranges and at their levels, right? So that idea allows us to move in terms of what students' needs are and how to support them in the best way possible. So Larissa, the, the best answer I can give to you is this approach would need to be personalized to students at their levels and at their needs, which is already what our teachers of Bostonia do, right? And so when you look at like kindergarten is a wonderful example, right? Kindergarten, the teacher will do a small group lesson, right? For the class and then she or he will break up into small group instruction. For so those of you who've been in kindergarten classrooms, you'll notice, right? You'll have different stations where the students are working on different things. Same idea here, right? So this is what I'm saying, and in a lot of ways, Bostonia is as far ahead of many other schools, right? Because the conversations that we've already been having, this is what the district is talking about to do district-wide, right? So it's not a very huge shift in terms of education for us, right? We just have to now orient it and modify it for what's best for our school. Ebony, yes, I agree. All children are different and have different needs. We can't think of them as the same person, which is a big, big thing. Tina asking, will younger kids have any type of meet the teacher opportunity orientation before first day of school? If we can't do some arrangement, we better. Do you agree with that? I think that's a wise thing to do. And I think orientation is a very wonderful and beautiful thing. So let's go with a likely, how's that? I think that's a very smart thing to do. I know when I was a teacher, I loved, loved orientation because it allowed students to meet the teacher, know who the teacher was, and also build a little excitement. You want students to be excited and stoked about what school is all about, right? So I'm all about that. So Tina, let's, let's go with a likely on that. I would love that. Ms. Jones asking, will there be designated online teachers and designated in-class teachers? Or will online students be observing a teacher who is teaching the class? It's a wonderful question. That is really dependent on numbers still, right? So I don't know the answer to that yet until I know the numbers of students I have in those different scenarios and then can build out what the needs are, right? So there, you know, it really has to be built around, around that data that comes out from these surveys. So what I'll be doing, and I hope everyone's okay with this, and let me know if you need more. But I'm planning as of now to do weekly meetings like this throughout the summer. And unlike a Friday, like around this time, if everyone's okay with that, there's so much information coming through. And I know that you, you as parents, don't want to feel out of the loop. And you also don't want to take information for granted that you see all over social media in different places, right? So I would love to do these meetings weekly and that way we can talk through it. And likely the conversation will shift through the summer in terms of as we know more and more. Okay, let me continue. Raquel asking, came in a little late. Are we still looking at classroom time and online time half and half? Yes, so there's going to be three different models that we're looking at. This was based on district-wide consensus from what parents were wanting. A major group was wanting all back at school. A major group was wanting 50-50, right? Some sort of hybrid. And a major group were saying that they were too scared to bring their kids back to school for, for multiple different reasons and wanted at home completely. So the idea is to provide those options and to make it as, as easy as possible for our students. Okay. Let me just go through the same thing. In the essential childcare at Alcoa District, the children are not able to bring lunch or any belongings to the school. Do you think it would be the same at Bostonia? By the way, I love the program. Good, good, good to that. I don't know yet. I think that's a CDC guideline that we would probably have to follow. That to me seems I'm not going to say it because that, that can change in a whim, depending on what the governor is saying. So I should probably know more now by next week. There was another report coming through from the state and so we should have more information on that by, by next week. So if you can do me a favor in that journey, could you just send me an email with that same question? And that way I can take a look into what the question actually is from the state point of view. When do they want the surveys back, Leslie? And please say hello to Ryan. ASAP, the sooner the better. I need to start planning. Please get those surveys back as soon as you can because I, I need to have this plan in place by like 10 weeks ago, right? So please, and if you know people who are saying that they're not doing a survey, tell them if you want school next year, do the survey now, right? So be on it, tell them the encouragement. Don't get too intense, but slightly intense would be great. Let's get that information back as soon as we can, okay? Arlette, will you be holding more updates and meetings with parents to update us? Yes, I'm going to do this weekly if that's okay with you. If you need more than that, let me know. But I would encourage us to be okay with weekly because it seems like the information's changing daily. So I don't want you to get too overwhelmed and confused with what's happening day to day. So week by week seems to be a little bit easier in terms of information. So let's go from there. What did I do with my thumb? That's a good question. I love swimming and I may have gotten out of the, I did a big ocean swim yesterday and slipped and sliced my finger on a rock. And anyways, long story short, fun. So into more questions, let's see. Do you know yet if Bostonia receives a if we receive a good batch of sixth graders? Would you, Amy, be a little bit more specific in that? I want to know what you're thinking, but I want to be careful with how I answer that question. So tell me a little bit more about what your thoughts are on that one. Let me know, I'm happy to answer it. Will the full-time back at school be for children of essential employees only? My thought process is, is just based on guidelines right now. There is a priority list that you will see on the state guidelines for how they approach this whole thing, right? So the district has been looking at loopholes nonstop. And one of those loopholes that gets our students back to school ASAP is this idea of childcare for essential workers, right? Essential workers, that title is pretty vague and also covers a lot of different families and a lot of jobs, right? So what that allows us to do is start providing school to a lot more kids in a lot quicker manners. So my understanding is from there, then there likely will be some sort of priority in terms of how we bring students back onsite, starting with the families who are, you know, in terms of highest need and then moving forward. And that's, that's fortunately or unfortunately dictated by the state. So it's kind of a tough, you know, either way, it's going to be interesting on that one. Stephanie, appreciate, yes, I appreciate you. And I do want to say in terms of access, I'm, my job is to be accessible, right? So please don't hesitate to reach out to me. If you hear something, I've heard some incredible rumors, some of them that are just downright amazing. Some things that I'm like, wow, that's impressive that somebody came up with that idea. So if you hear rumors that are, you know, a little extreme or off the top and you're not really sure about it, getting nervous about it, email me or text me or send a message to me or whatever it may be and let me know. And then I'm happy to work through it with you. I know I've been calling parents all week with different, you know, here's something I heard and here's what I know, right? So please let me know. It's better for us to hear from, from the source as much as we can. Okay, and Leslie, good seeing you and perfect. Good, 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 good to see you, Ryan Sage. And Kendra, I'll definitely make sure to be doing weekly meetings as much as I can. Julia, will both parents need to be essential employees? I don't think so. I think if this categorized by one parent is an essential employee, probably is the categorization. And I know that's, that's a spectrum in terms of what that means. On the survey, it should list it out in terms of what are current essential employees is my understanding. Yeah, and Susanna, I know I'm doing my best to answer questions without having many answers. That's always a very frustrating thing. I like answers. You can imagine your principals, the personalities that we like solutions very quickly. And not to have that is very taxing on the patience. Saliva is full-time will possibly be 636, from what I understand. Will we need to pay if our kids are there longer than a typical school that we do for EDP? Okay, so here is one of, I'm going to toot the horn of the district here for a second. One of these brilliant ideas is the state released funding for allowing, you know, for design work, for processing all of that. Most school districts are using that funding in order to do planning. We're not as much, right? We're using a lot of that funding in terms of getting kids back at school, which is awesome. So what that means is EDP is free, right? And so this is something that is really good. And that's a big advertisement, right? And especially as we're growing in numbers and growing out in terms of reaching for families outside of the district as well, especially here at Bostonia. That's a big thing. A lot of families need that and so the district is providing it. And so Miss Saliva, the idea is if you need it, it's there, right? And that's something that's specifically designed around families. And so this is kind of a big shift, right? Is that education is, is the shift in the district is moving education to facilitate the needs of families. And that, that has to happen, that has to be the shift anyways, right? And so we have to understand that. Perfect. Yeah, yeah, Miss, Miss there. Rumors are difficult, right? And I always in my classroom, I played the game telephone all the time with my children in my classroom. Because it's it's what happens, right? What I say generally comes back to me about 15 versions of what I had said, right? And it's almost never exactly the same situation, right? So everybody hears things differently. So my recommendation always is if something sounds very outlandish and doesn't sound student-centric and doesn't sound about children, you can assume that more than likely it's not something that we want to be doing, right? And so come back to us and come back to talking to me. Feel free to reach out to me at any time and just let me know what your thoughts are. And then I will always respond. You'll hear this sort of like a broken record that if it doesn't make sense for our children, then why are we doing it, right? We have to make things as best as possible, right? We have to realize that what's best for one family isn't going to be best for another, right? So that's a reality too. And we have to work through that. But the idea here is we want to be as, as understanding of the needs of many of our families during this very, very crazy, difficult time. Perfect. Okay. Alrighty. Oh, good question. Stephanie, you've got wonderful questions. I always appreciate that. So Indigo was wondering what kinds of things she might do at summer camp as we are calling it. What I would appreciate, and I'm going to just throw this out there. What would you, what would parents want? What would be something that you want as parents here at Bostonia? Our community is very different. I've said it a bazillion times. So would you mind just commenting on what would you want for summer program? What would be helpful for you? I'm going to give you some ideas of things that I've thought about. I think we should have an emphasis on Spanish. That would be wise, right? We should have an emphasis on Spanish reading, Spanish writing and Spanish oral language development, all of that. Indigo says, science and art, I love it. I love it, I love it, yes. What else, right? We want to think through this. I know I was just meeting with my middle school teacher team and we were thinking about design work and projects and really working through what will allow the middle school group to feel super excited about the next school year. I have a space out here that needs to be designed out. Why not have them come and start working on design and figuring out what they want, right? These are all things that are, are very appropriate, right? And it's about students and about what their needs are. Art, music, focus on Spanish. Yeah, there's lots of things. And yes, sharing it through this playlist, I love that. That's a good idea. Maybe before school ends, I can ask the teachers, are they willing to ask students what they want? That's a good idea. Get them outside playing, doing some sort of PE skills, right? And doing some sort of games, things like that. Organizing Zoom art classes, yeah, yeah. I love that. One of the things that I've been thinking about, and now that we're sort of you know, there's, there's not as many questions right now. So some of the things I've been thinking about, one of those things is within our parent community, there's a lot of talent, right? And there's a lot of things that you know as parents how to do that maybe we could support other students with, with sort of jumping in as, you know, crash labs or design labs around how to do something, right? So an example could be if one of our parents really wants to, to do a little lesson on an art project or something like that. That could be a fun way to, to, you know, create greater options for students. And through this online platform that provides us with a lot of different ideas, right? The 4H club model, I love that. Latricia, give me, you'll have to talk to me more about that. That's a very interesting idea. Yeah. Dealing with emotions through art, self-expression, painting videos, I love that. You know, in all of this right now, the students who've been or the group that has been hurt the most, right? Is, is our children, right? And that's unfortunate. At my school, I know I've had a lot of parents who reached out to me with a lot in terms of depression and emotional needs and all of that. So this is a big thing is over the next few months, we really want to focus in on this idea of social emotional learning and really understand what our students' needs are and how to support them in the best way possible. Stephanie saying, concerned with parent volunteers right now. Yeah, we can talk through concerns. I probably wouldn't have volunteers on campus. That probably would not be wise, right? Yet, but over Zoom, for sure. There's, there's ideas that we can do on that and share different Zoom classes. There's, there's a lot of options that we can play around with. But Stephanie, I would love to think through that with you. And then socializing with kids their age, yes, that's, that's very much. We need socialization, a big part of public school. We need socialization. A big part of public school, remember, is about socialization. That's what makes public school, public school, right? It's one of the challenges of being in school is the socialization part, but it's also one of the major positives, right? So we really want our kids to be able to be with each other and see each other. And remember that school is a wonderful place. Perfect. Perfect, yes. Support, and and I know as things get going and as ideas become more concrete, we probably will have lists for donations and things like that that we may want for our classrooms and what that can look like. Indigo wants a lot of free time. Okay. I love it. Indigo, you might get bored with all of that free time, so tell me what you want to do with that. That would be fun. Maybe we can do some fun activities in a lot of free time. Perfect. I love it. All right, well. What I'll do then is next Friday, let's just assume we will do our best to have another meeting. I'll send out a notice next week as well. Probably a little closer to when the actual meeting happens. My schedule each week is insane and all over the place. So some weeks I have a little bit more flexibility than others, and maybe I'll have more timeframes in that. For Miss Fuentez, in terms of if you just logged in, no problem. Summer school, so summer school, there would be an Inquest, a survey that should already be out. You should already received it. Apparently, everyone got it today. And so that will allow us to know what you would like, what you would like for summer school, what that would look like in terms of timing and and your timeframes, as well as for next year. What you want in terms of the type of model to be for your students, right? So the three options, and I'll just say it again for everyone, is hundred percent at school, a fifty-fifty hybrid type model, and a hundred percent distance learning. So make sure, Miss Fuentez, that you take a look at that survey and then answer to the best of your ability, okay? You know, Jenny, asking a really good question. How are the teachers doing with all of this? What about staff? I think our teachers are are doing the best they can, but it's exhausting. I know they they are, they're done, they're they're ready for for a break. It's a lot of work. And I think the the exhausting part of it is is not just the actual paper, you know, the the actual stuff that they have to do each day, but it's also the emotional. The 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 reality of they, for many of our children are are a parent, they're a counselor. They are the support, they are everything, and a teacher is just one of the components to their day. And so in that, you can imagine if you have thirty children who you care about a lot, and each of them has a very different need and is struggling and needs, you can imagine how tiring that gets in a very quick manner. And so I think for our teachers, the uncertainty, right, is also exhausting. And not having a set, here's what's going on, because teachers also like to plan, and they like to have an idea, and they like to work things out as best as they can, right? So it's it's not been easy, I know that. But we have a very, very passionate and motivated and strong group of teachers at this school. So if anything, we can all agree that we're very thankful for this group of teachers. They are a wonderful group of people. Let's go into a few more questions. Will kids have to get a vaccine when it comes available? I don't know yet. I know that's going to be a major controversial situation once that comes through. We don't know yet. That's likely going to come through at a state level in terms of what that's going to be asking, right? So you know, Alaba, I will say that when we get to that point, you will probably be having conversations with me. And we can talk through what that looks like. I don't know. I don't know yet what what's going to be asked of. And then Jenny asking, how can we sort with that? I want them to know we value them. You know what? The best thing you can do is exactly what you just said. Let them know you value them. I think for myself as a teacher, little notes that just said, you know, I love you, I appreciate you, you're doing a great job. Thank you for all your hard work, all of that. That goes a long ways. Teachers, staff, all of us, we we don't receive that a lot. And and that that's something where people do a lot of work for free, right, in terms of the all of the craziness, right? On top of what their job description are. You know, our teachers work many, many, many hours on top of what their contract hours are. And they do that because they care about kids. And so that's something that I would recommend. It's just a note, a thank you. All of that, that goes a really long way, and it makes teaching very valued. Okay. Moving into. Yeah, and if staff will need to take the vaccine as well, yeah, that's that's, yeah, I don't know. It hasn't come out yet. We don't know how long it will take. All those different questions are up in the air. That's a great question. Tara, if you just jumped on, no problem. Where can we find a survey? It should be emailed to you from the district. It should be a centralized district email that came to your inbox. If for some reason you haven't reached or it or it doesn't come to you, send me an email or text me, call me, call the school. The school's open Monday every day. We have a staff here who's working like crazy to make sure that as many questions are answered as possible. That's that's perfect. So definitely reach out. Let me know. Okay. So I'm gonna do this one more time because it's a good thing to do. My email is winter at Oklahoma Valley dot net, okay? And every single meeting I put my email in there, but if you have a question or concern, email me. Let me know your questions. Let me know what I can do to support you. If I don't immediately respond to your email, it's not because I don't want to, it's because I have lots of emails. So if I haven't responded to your email after a day or two, send it to me again. And send it to me again and again and again, and I will get to you because I I need to and I want to. And so that would be a very good thing. Latricia putting in, PTA is doing lunch appreciation starting today due to parents donations. Do you think so, guys? Oh, yes. Yeah, I love it. I'm gonna do a shout out to Latricia and the PTA right now. They are very supportive. We've got a really, really good group of people that really love our kids. And so, Latricia, I don't know how much you work. It's amazing what you do. So very, very, very thankful for our PTA. That's a really beautiful group of people that have our kids' interests at their hearts, and I really am thankful for that. So thank you. Alaba, will kids keep laptops over the summer? Yes, that's my understanding is that they will keep the laptops. We want to make sure that your students have the ability to keep doing schoolwork and different things like that. There won't be playlists over the summer, as they have been going now. Our teachers are going to take a break. I'm much needed. But there's definitely a lot of programs and things that you can have access to on your laptops that continue throughout the summer. So definitely, that's that's absolutely fine. Rosio, how can we donate? That would be a good question for Latricia. I'm sure Latricia can definitely go through that. And you know what? Latricia, are you able to jump on this phone call? Would you be willing, just because I have a a good group of parents here, just give one more plug in for the chocolate sales? That might be a smart thing to do right here.
Yes, that'd be awesome. We have like about a hundred and twenty boxes of caramel that we need to sell. We, I will be posting on our PTA page the link. We finally have a web store, which is really easy for no cash. People don't have cash a lot. So you can pay for the boxes of chocolate, and you can either pick them up from us or you can donate. We had a lovely parent who, two lovely parents that came today and purchased two boxes. And they're donating to the Oklahoma Police Department. So, yeah, so look for that link on our PTA group page where you can even just donate money. If you want to donate money towards things like this, like the Teacher Appreciation Week, that we'll be doing all week next week, that'll, that will help us too. And any parents, if you guys have chocolate money out, or you know any parents that owe chocolate money, if they can please turn that money in or coordinate with PTA. That'll be great. That's another portion of money that is out there that we really, really need. We would like to be able to roll over funds next year. So we could do a lot more things to provide for the school, the teachers, especially to boost the students' morale as we have three different platforms they have to get used to.
Let you shot, what what is the number of of sales that you need? Where are you right now?
So we have a hundred and twenty-one boxes of caramel and about fifty boxes of variety that we need to get out there.
What does that equate to financially?
Hundred and twenty plus fifty was a hundred and seventy times sixty dollars. I don't have my.
That's a lot of money, right? So that that Latricia's being very kind in her words right now, which is, Latricia, you're wonderful. It is imperative in terms of the PTA to be able to be supported in that. So I know that this is, sometimes feels like a, you know, a a burden or whatever it may be. But it is something that's really going to help our school is to make sure that those sales are done. So if those are out there, then I am saying again, please make sure that you are able to support the PTA in that. The PTA is is created to support our students, and that goes immediately back to our kids, right? So, you know, it's it's for a good cause, and it's a good thing. Betsy, I believe you put in the the actual site in which you can go ahead and do that. Betsy, would you mind jumping on quickly and just saying what what one can do on that Language Academy site?
I guess.
Okay.
Yeah, both of it, either one. So that that website is linked to the program that I use for all of my accounting. As you know, or if you don't know, I am the treasurer, and I take care of a lot of the financial, all of the financials in our PTA. And I love it because it links directly to to the account, and it's really easy for parents to use. I've set it up where there's multiple options. You can buy boxes of chocolate to donate, or you can buy boxes of chocolate to mail. We will mail a whole box of chocolate, or however many boxes of chocolate you want us to mail. It's already set up where there's a shipping fee. There will be a shipping fee. And it's all set up there. Just just follow the instructions if you want it shipped, or if you want to pick it up, you can do that. If you want to ship, there's an also option to put in the recipient's name and address and all that information, and we will do it for you. And also, you can buy chocolate by the bags. And the same thing, you can either pick it up or let us know and, you know, meet us at the school. A lot of next, like, for example, next week, we will, we will be at the school almost every single day. And then there's also other things that that I've added, spiritware that you can also buy. Starting next month, we'll all, I will add membership that you can also purchase online. And just whatever starts coming up. I I love that we started that website. It just makes it really easy, especially with this hybrid distance learning in school, not in school situation. So everybody has the opportunity to come in, log in, and still be part of the school. And and just purchase spiritware, purchase membership, purchase chocolate. You know, it's it's really easy. I love it.
Perfect. Yeah, we we've got a very wonderful PTA. I mean, that's, it seems a rarity in a lot of schools. So definitely support our PTA, support our students in that. And remember, all of this goes back to our school. So thank you, Latricia and Betsy, for all of your hard work and everybody else in the PTA. That's really a good thing. One other shout out to do while I've got everybody here. If you'd like to be involved in the PTA, I know the PTA is always looking for new support, so that is something. It really is a very strong way to support the future of the school, being a part of decision-making, thought processes, all of that. So I always do a big call out for anybody who wants to be a part of the PTA and be supportive in that. It's it's a wonderful group, and they've all got a wonderful heart, so thank you for all your work. Okay. Sounds good. Well, it doesn't look like there's any other questions coming through. I'm gonna just pause here for just a minute or more, but I'm just gonna start ending the conversation here. We will get together again next Friday, I hope. If anything changes, I will let you know, but look forward for a, some sort of notice coming through at some point next week. I talked about the town hall meeting, so I'm thankful for everyone for your time tonight, for all of your support. I know it's crazy right now, but we're all in this together. We're all learning how to do this together. So I will end with just remembering that this is about children. This is about our students. So when we think about it that way, it becomes a little bit more intentional, right? We have to be realistic about what our kids' needs are and what our families' needs are. So thank you, everyone, for all your support, for all that you're doing. And remember, reach out to me if you need anything at all. I'm here for you. Thank you. All right. And if anybody else has any any last questions, I'm just here to pop on. Or we'll start ending here in about a minute or so. All right. All right, everyone. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful weekend. I'll talk to you all soon and see you next week. Adios.